You lead the Superior Policeman.
Much praise to your ever called God's Lord and Savior, the state of Woodston. Our school citizens, your government, your ancestors, the history of state, you know, they're all worthy students and staff that are worthy of state, dear God, for our Lord. But if you do appeal to your Lord today, but make decisions that affect our system, dear God, thank you for this, dear your Lord and well, always thank you for your Son, Jesus, for the crawling gallery, the salvation he provided for our parents. In the name of worship. Amen.
All right, Ms. Plon. Don't you have your knowledge? What's your value, girl?
I'm still answering.
Uh, you have a group leading pledge.
I am.
Would you introduce them or have them introduce themselves?
They went to, this is my teaching as a profession class. Uh, these are our future teachers. It's a new program that was started last year and I'm very proud. They're hardworking students and a place to see what the future calls for. Let me introduce themselves.
Sure. Emily O.
Kim.
Waylon Holder.
Hey, it's Apple.
That's not one.
I hope you tell their sister. They look, they almost look like, wait.
Are y'all the same age? Which one is the oldest? Uh, me.
The birthday is tomorrow.
Go ahead and lead us.
And to the Lord's command, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nelson, we're also going to stay and observe.
I was getting ready to say, you gonna say, stay or do something else?
Stay just a little while.
I need a motion to approve the agenda today.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? I need a, a motion to approve the September fifth meeting minutes. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Ms. Charlena, did anybody sign up for public comment here?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to close public comment here?
I make a motion to close public comment.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, leadership team updates. I guess that means principals, directors, Mr. Matheson, since you're on the front row, we'll let you start.
All right. I don't think that's a whole lot of, so our English teacher, those teachers today, they're continuing their training, their reading and speaking. And also myself and Miss Sawyer, uh, we were doing a webinar series, uh, reading and friendship training, help us better when we go into classroom offerings. So that's going real well. Uh, this month, RHS will host an SAT and ACT, uh, for our students. And also the virtual grading period's gonna end next week. Uh, at CTE, we have, uh, the, uh, set up a tour for the CTE teachers. It's behind the scenes tour, and there is purity casino that will be on October the eighteenth. The reason that we're going for this tour is because basically every program that we offer within our CTE program, uh, Grand County Schools, uh, there are jobs related to that, uh, at the casino. So, uh, they, several of the area directors have taken their teachers there and have said it's very beneficial, uh, to go and see, uh, how our kids could be employed upon graduation. So, uh, I think that'll be good for us. Uh, this month, we have the Grand County Athletic Hall of Fame induction. That would be on October the twentieth, the halftime of the Hayesville game. And that night, we will have a reception at six o'clock in the Old Rock Gym. Uh, and I'd like to invite the board to come out for that and, uh, all past Hall of Fame members are invited to that reception, plus the new W Ds. The new W Ds this year are Todd Oden, Scott Oden, Ronnie Moosel, nineteen eighty-two state championship football team, and nineteen eighty-three state championship football team. We'll be in W D at halftime. We have homecoming on October the thirteenth. And, uh, the homecoming parade will be at three o'clock that day. And we do have a new route for the homecoming parade. And we put that out on social media and it's been in the newspaper. Uh, and football is going well, volleyball, our JV football team just won the conference championship last Thursday by beating Swain County. Uh, volleyball is doing pretty good and they'll have senior night on October the tenth for volleyball team. And that is also their peak game. So they'll be doing things that night for raise money, uh, for cancer support. So, uh, I'd ask the child to come out to that and support those kids across the country. It's going well. Fans in competition this past Saturday doing real well. So, uh, everything pretty much going good at the high school.
Mr. Matt, Mr. Mattson, uh, Mr. Mattson has told me, I can ask you this, will you talk a little bit about the girls wrestling and the meeting that you had and what's going forward?
Yeah, so, uh, we had, they had, obviously, girls wrestling is now such a, uh, Oregon Basketball Association, they ran it last week. They had about thirty middle school girls attend to the meeting and about, uh, twelve high school girls. So we definitely will have another half a team. Uh, we will say we've had a couple people that have been involved, girl wrestling here in accounting. And, uh, it would be, I'm assuming that the board would want this job as far as being a head varsity coach or head middle school coach to be posted. And, uh, we would need to hire that, uh, position pretty soon. And I hate that we don't have somebody ready to bring to the board today, but they didn't even have an organizational meeting until last week. So really, it was time. We did a meeting with all the wrestling coaches yesterday, the men's coaches, and the two, uh, people who have been helping with Williams program. And, uh, we established, you know, practice times and, uh, so the way that would work is the middle school boys will practice right after school from three thirty to five. Varsity boys will build from five to seven. And the, the girls, middle school and varsity, practice from seven to eight thirty or nine each night. That will only be for half of the year because the middle school wrestling season ends in December. So when it ends, then the varsity girls, they will move their practice to right after school. So, uh, but, and they've worked with that all over, combined with that, they've worked that out. But, uh, we do need to officially get a, a coach hired and that brings conversation. If it's not, I have, this fall, we started doing golf, get Williams to answer that for us, that season is now over. We had seven girls that participated throughout the season, got to go play in several tournaments. Uh, we did kind of introduce them to it to see how it was gonna go, but, uh, Mr. Williams did that for free. He did not get stipends for that. And right now, currently, with the amount of funding that we give local funds along with, uh, what is already dedicated to other coaching positions in Grand County Schools, we do not have funds to pay the women's golf coach or women's wrestling, wrestling coaches. So, there you go. If the board wants that to be officially hired position and wants us to have that program, you know, uh, obviously, we need to find the funding to be able to pay stipends to those coaches, uh, to be able to run those programs. So, I will leave that in one lap. That's something I can approve of. So, uh, if that's something that you wanna do, that, that's a conversation that needs to be had and it needs to be heard, where those funds will come from.
And you care to talk just a little bit about other girls wrestling and other counties?
Okay, so, uh, yesterday, I actually had a personal conversation with Bill Langenship. Uh, I was at the inauguration with the chief and vice chief and I sat with Bill and we talked about the program. Uh, girls wrestling, you know, on the varsity level will be a conference sport with a conference champion. And currently, there are five teams within our conference that have indicated, five out of six that have indicated that they will have girls wrestling. Uh, Hayesville, I think, said they would have three kids. Uh, none of them have a full team except for Swain County. Most of them, a couple of them are six to eight kids, then we got, you know, three or four, I think, at Hayesville or Mary. But five, there will be five girls teams. The way that would work as far as the conference schedule, when we're, with the boys are scheduled, say, for wrestle Hayesville, then the girls match will be before the boys match. So they'll be starting at six o'clock, then maybe the boys at seven o'clock. So there would be two matches each night, I said. And the middle school, the middle school, very many schools have middle school girls, so they're gonna have to work on, uh, cover it up with a schedule, uh, as I mentioned, before travel, uh, where we have some, get matches. Like Swain, maybe have the middle school girls. There are some schools in North Carolina, but it will be tough to get middle school girls, uh, doing team matches. Now, there are tournaments open to them on a weekly, on a regular basis.
But it is a growing sport.
It is a growing sport and, uh, you know, uh, we're, if all people say we're football town, we're wrestling town too. There's a lot of support behind this and it's just another opportunity for our, uh, students to have, have a avenue to go be successful. I think there's great opportunities for us, you know, Wednesday championships in, in girls wrestling and, you know, those are things that build character and, uh, you know, so we want to operate if we can. But again, you know, uh, we are, I will say this, we are not required to operate. Uh, it, it, you know, but each school has to determine what they can, uh, what they can vote for. And we offered, you know, a, a number of girl sports now, uh, that is sufficient, I mean, we don't back off. But we have a lot of kids that are interested in it and I think it would be, uh, be injustice to them if we didn't operate and we don't come up with a way to pay those payments.
How many girls, did you say?
There was, oh, yeah, there was forty-two. Uh, that's middle school and varsity. There were twelve varsity girls and thirty middle school girls. And you can figure out, you may gain, she may lose, lose. A lot of kids, more than a lot of schools are doing middle school practices together in our building. Because of the number of kids we have in this middle school, we just don't have the room, you've been talking about sixty kids in the rest of the building if we try to do middle school practices together. Uh, we also have to come up with a solution for a locker room because our rest of the building does not have a locker room facility. So, uh, we're gonna let the girls wrestling program use the locker room that's in the helpful living centers, uh, that's dedicated to girls. And, uh, you know, so they'll have a place, they'll be there on as far as that goes. They'll have a locker room where they lock their, their stuff up and, uh, it'll be checked just like, you know, the locker room and the restroom, check, the coach will check it every night, make sure it's cleaned up, lock everything up, and, you know, close the door on the floor, they care of that. We have that extension, everything. So basically, it's just a, you know, twenty-five foot walk across from one people to the other. So it, it is not an easy thing at all, but it would be a very powerful.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Thank you. All right, uh, elementary.
Yeah, I got it.
You've got elementary.
I do.
Very good, Mr. Matt.
All right, so, um, thought it was exciting last week. Uh, we, uh, we have started RISE, which is a one hour period a day to, um, help rise all students with math and reading. So it's kind of an intervention time, it's a state encouragement all school systems can have, so we need to stay requirements of that. Miss Oger and myself participated in a literacy training, which is beneficial, so when we go to classrooms and observe, we know kind of what we're looking for and what's the state wants with standards and stuff like that. Kelly Pratt is a regional literacy consultant and, um, she will be continuing to work with us throughout the school year to, um, strengthen our literacy program and all that in our school. Kelly Pratt at Germany Gibbs, uh, DPI representatives came by the other day. We did a walkthrough, um, they were pleased with, like, like what they saw. They said if we could take our school and set it at that Mills River, we'd be a big school. So I thought that was a good compliment. Um, they also, uh, but they give us some things we can work on. So they always wanna know what we can do bad, so that was good as well, good feedback. And, um, our teachers on the workday, we finished letter train, working on that. And, um, that's my all, you got any questions?
So the RISE is for every school?
It's for every student in our school. So if you're an AIG student, we wanna try to make you even smarter.
So other schools were doing this, causing the state?
Other schools have intervention time, yes. The, the MTSs and all that, you know, that's part of the state requirement, just like.
Did you say that it was math and reading?
Yes, math and reading, both. Yes, Mike. We're excited. Um, it was a change in schedule and people don't like change, so y'all might have some phone calls saying, "Mr. Matt, this upper's crazy, this schedule's crazy" and all that, but, but you know, you work the kinks out and then we moved forward and the goal is to help kids, so. I'm gonna go, Miss Oger's not here today, I'm just following call away and just a lot across the pond, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate it.
Uh, I know Ms. Walsh isn't here as, as our representative for the middle school.
Hello, yes.
Ms. Wiggins.
Good morning. I wanted to let you know that I took some published data to you each month. Um, I would like to replace that, I can do that to you with, we were looking at what you're thinking for our thing, your thing to be the rest of the quarter or, uh, for so, two thousand four, there's nurses. I just hope to get a shout out, you know, that the data that we have published to you , uh, for the past year, was about critical in the way that the cost of our grant at another school, it was approximately around six hundred thousand. We've not been notified if we have been awarded that grant, uh, that we were certainly in for. So when we give you that headaches for our group, you know, secret data process, it's important that you use it for, uh, future, uh, opportunities for grants. So I will keep you in the loop if we, um, are awarded that grant. Um, the other thing that I want to bring to your attention is that, um, we've had a very unique experience. I received a phone call from our state consultants. Um, I've been looking at some of the answers from the district. And then what that means is that I track students who fall under the homeless category, students who might live in standard housing, students who might be double loved, or those that might not have adequate housing at all. And, um, the, um, local, um, our local, um, representative reached out to me and asked us if we wanted to make a training video. So last week, we were very honored to be able to use Bell Wash, which is now pretty private, she didn't want to be going to Bell, to make a training video for her and the rest of the state of Oklahoma. So we actually had a professional come in, the new fellows and the vehicles, and we anticipate that that video will be available for the end of the year. And it's something that DPI will do lots across the state to train other homeless liaisons as they begin their role, um, in the school system. So I'm very proud that they thought another great county, that they picked up the phone and said, "We'd like to showcase what you do in great counties." And hopefully, we'll be able to use that to betterment of children and students who might be scared and homeless. Um, the only other thing that I can think to give you this morning is that we have had some turnover in our nursing position at the elementary school. And, Mr., um, we will recognize your names, uh, because of that we were last year that you were working on.
I just have one question. How many homeless kids do we have in our students?
That number varies from year to year. We are expected, um, the mandate to review those numbers and names every city in Europe. So we may have a student that was all last year's head count that may remain rocking on these years. We typically run from about fourteen to twenty. That's typically our head count. And so we follow right under a new number of students that we can actually request initial funding for. Uh, they have given us an option if we would choose to, uh, perhaps, um, collaborate with other counties, um, to make our numbers more, um, the standard number for, for funding purposes. But we've never, at this point, sort of lenient ourselves to other surrounding counties who are in a similar situation than we are. But our numbers are typically about fourteen to twenty-one.
Okay, now let me see if I understand this. If I'm homeless and I'm living in your house, yeah, my county?
You could potentially be counted because you were considered double loved. The definition, but can you even tell is that if you could be asked to leave where you are staying and you're considered double loved, then yes, you are considered also homeless and all.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Sunny.
Good morning. Um, just wanted to share that, um, I've had a grant back in the summer. It's a small grant, five thousand dollars, Carolina, across one hundred, and in national suicide prevention. We received that grant. We had our first meeting yesterday and it is just a, a movement to help everyone in the community know about suicide prevention, suicide awareness. So, um, we have a really good team of people. We've got people from county government, city government, law enforcement, VSS, health departments. We had our first meeting yesterday and that was really exciting. And, um, Noble Nights have a lot of stuff going on this week. This month, we're gonna be walking in the suicide prevention walk and there're gonna be a Halloween and trees, so some positive things going there. And I'll be back when it comes time for, uh, tr- uh, field trips.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Good morning. Uh, we're on the test, see, uh, actually, already, well, no, man. Uh, the high school has already, uh, done some, uh, check-ins in biology. I believe in math three, we're doing check-ins today. Uh, we'll be doing, uh, I was supposed to, I was going to go out yesterday, we're gonna be doing first round of check-in for the elementary school, I believe, uh, later this month and then beginning of next month. And then also check-ins at the, uh, middle school that's gonna be later in this month left. So a lot of testing going on already. Uh, you know, of course, those check-ins are basically interim assessments, kind of let teachers know how students are doing with the standards that they've covered and, you know, any way they may need to revisit those standards or revise those standards and, uh, just really the information that teachers have. Uh, we also have, uh, by legislation, you know, the students that were in third grade last year, you know, of course, they have the, uh, reading to achieve legislation and they had, according to that legislation, any student that did not make proficiency on the third grade, uh, reading tests of the last year, you know, they have one more opportunity by November the first, uh, to show proficiency. So that, that test will be, you know, at, here's where the end is this month, well, so. Uh, also, the high school, we have pre-ACD coming up here, what, on the fourteenth maybe, uh, here in the next little while, so, but all times are aligned with it. And I will be, uh, coming back here in a little while, I'll live, I have an agenda. I'll present, uh, the, the sword from, uh, last school here, probably recognize that to be there, just a few moments.
All right, Ms. Walbrook, do you have anything for us?
Hang on, I just wanted to, uh, I'll, I'll.
If I missed anybody, I don't think I did. Mr. Moody, do you wanna update us on safe schools?
Uh, nothing much has changed. We've got a lot of things to need to, to look at. Your future ones being door locks, these terminals are getting old and harder to, uh, maintain. We're still willing to change, making interior doors. Uh, that's, that's the main ones. We did fund money to tent another big section of elementary. So, uh, now that the budget's passed, I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity to apply for a safe schools grant again from state. Remember, we don't get federal state funds. We have to compete with other schools to get money to, 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 uh, keep our kids safe. Hoping that, that's the case, we'll have money to do the keys and finish out the tents. Uh, the other issue is at the high school, we've had a problem this morning, our, uh, our intercomp systems are archaic.
I'm not gonna.
Okay, and they're, they're, they're pretty much, especially elementary, but, you know, in the high school, we know this morning, of course, communication is very important when it comes to keeping schools safe. If you're looking at what my roughly hundred fifty thousand dollars per campus to.
Yes.
To do that. So, uh, that's something that some of the workers from the after.
This is the second time ours has went out in the last month.
Yeah. So except for an issue, that's the best way to communicate with everybody on the campus, you know, it's ours to be, no. I think you could do it to y'all pretty quick. So, and I may even try and fly a program for that, but I hope that this is more, you know, that I, I, I.
All right, field trip request. Sunny, you said you had one, so let's hear it.
Um, I would like to request permission to take the Noble Nights. About fifteen of them have, uh, have signed up to Forsyth County Day School on the fourteenth and fifteenth, that is a Saturday and a Sunday. We will be going to Licensed Mental Health Counselors Convention. Uh, so this is like a college master's level type thing, but they want to go. They'll be able to sit in on some of those classes, some of those presentations. Uh, most of their meals will be provided. They've been invited to come there for free. It's normally about four hundred and fifty dollars per person, um, and they've been invited to come for free. We will be staying in Winston-Salem over the night.
Do I have a motion to approve the Noble Nights trip to Forsyth County, uh, Winston-Salem for, uh, fourteen students? Uh, how many chaperones?
I'm scared, so we have four chaperones.
Four for fourteen.
Yeah. Well, one is actually a volunteer parent that wants to come with us.
Sure. All right, do I have a motion to approve the Noble Nights trip to Forsyth County for fourteen students?
I make a motion to approve the trip to Forsyth County for the Noble Nights.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, is that it?
That's.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Matt.
And also, I'll mention this, the last meeting, I don't, I can't remember if I was out or not, but in CTE, I backed through the spring, it's not, it's written to myself, uh, working on a grant, all wheels for CTE through golf with trucks. And we found out, uh, that we have awarded that grant for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars over nine years. So we're just gonna do some things to help, uh, middle school CTE program and also getting a purchase, make a cover trailer and a, and a truck, uh, to go back and forth to John Sythoff on campus, so.
What was the name of that?
Wheels for CTE was the title of our grant. So it's gonna pay for teachers, uh, the high school teachers to actually have a walk, a one hour walk during their planning and have eighth grade students come over to start introducing them to our CTE program. So it's a new recruiting tool for our high school CTE program and then, uh, it's also gonna, uh, there'll be a new CDC, half CDC, half teacher position in our middle school in CTE for five years, so. Really good thing. I've got three field trips. The first one is through Project Discovery. It is to Maria College, October the twenty-fourth, but then we'll be coming back on the twenty-fifth. This is in Kentucky, it's for juniors and seniors. Chaperones will be Jenny B. Sorales, Aaron Goodmaster, and I'll director to all, uh, employees of Cross discovery, Western Carolina University. It's a trip that we've done every year for several years and it's a great trip for our kids, doing it as a work in college. So when you go there, you, you're assigned to actually a job and you have to work on campus. And we've had some kids that have went up there and been really successful. So that's the first trip I have and you got a good, the rest, go to the rest. The next one is a trip for our Club of Math and Science, it'll be twenty students. Chaperone, Adam Brooks and Ben Davis. And this will be for October the nineteenth, to go to the Lost Sea on a caving trip. So the kids will actually de-caving. Uh, so that's a really, really fun trip for them. They've also done that in the past. And then the last trip I have is for Project Discovery also. This is for ninth grade students, it's a maximum of ten kids. And it is on October the sixteenth through the eighteenth. And this is a backpacking trip and they've also done this before. Uh, there'll be on the Mountains to Sea Trail, uh, at Flat Laurel Creek and Sam's Dog and, uh, the chaperones are Aaron Goodmaster, Alan Draker, and Jenny B. Sorales. They have been in this before, so.
Okay, it's a couple nights, I'll finish. What was the date to the trip to Maria?
It is October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. It's one night. So we'll be on the twenty-fourth, sit that night in the back of the room. Lost Sea is down there in Bag, and then the back, I can drift, it's covered by, so we can.
All right, do I have a, I'm gonna do these one at a time. Do I have a motion to approve the Project Discovery trip to Maria, Kentucky on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Do I have a, a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, do I have a motion to approve the math and science trip on October nineteenth to the Lost Sea in Sweetwater, Tennessee?
I make a motion to approve the trip to Sweetwater, Tennessee, the Lost Sea.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, David, I think I've done Mr. Four.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the Project Discovery trip, backpacking trip, and that's all in, in the mountain city, right?
Yes.
Okay, on October sixteen through the eighteen?
I still love it.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Are there any?
Yeah, one more. So, um, the Noble Nights also, I mentioned, want to go to the suicide prevention walk. It's on a Sunday, October the twenty-second. Um, right now, I have about twenty-five kids wanting to go. So that'll just be at Ashville and that, but just to make you aware and to make sure that it's okay for us to take them to Bubba County and walk into the cyber.
Okay, now what, what's the date?
Um, October twenty-second. And Jessica Ayers and myself will be chaperoning.
Start back in the day.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, suicide prevention walk in Asheville, North Carolina for the, excuse me, you don't have to? Oh, okay, I thought we had to have permission.
Whatever. I would think it goes out of some hanging just over nine. I always say over nine.
Oh, okay, sorry, here, are there any more? Okay, good, testing and accountability update, Mr. White, here on the.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Please.
That's, you've covered some.
All right. So, the way I want to do this, uh, I think first of all, and now, probably what you're looking at is probably a little different than, than what you've seen in the past, uh, but this is the best way that I do to, uh, to present this to you, so, now I've got to the point where I can't do anything by reading, so.
There we go, we understand.
I certainly tell ladies about, but, uh, first thing I wanted to do is I, I wanted to revisit last year, all right, so, or spot the twenty-two, twenty-three, but the, the year before that, and if you remember, I believe in my presentation in year before, uh, you know, I mentioned, I said there a little while ago, you know, where Jeremy Gibbs talked about, I mean, taking our schools and placing it somewhere else, you know, uh, basically with our student demographics, you know, what basically the, how, what students that compose our, of our schools, if you look and, and compare all of those like we did last year, you know, around eighty-five percent of the schools that have the same demographic that we have, we're all in the same boat, and so with that being said, if you'll remember, over on the top right, so that was, of course, the, the, the school performance that we had year before last, where the Robbinsville Elementary School did not make growth, had a school letter grade of D, Robbinsville Middle School had the same, they did not make growth, had a letter of school grade of three, had a D, the Robbinsville High School, of course, they met and grew, and had a school letter grade of C, and so now, last year, and I'll be honest with you, uh, you know, to me, the most important thing, uh, when it comes to, uh, improving the test scores and all helps is growth, you know, you want your students to grow every single year, and when students grow, you know, worse proficiency, it'll be a little better, it'll be a little better, it'll be a little better, um, and so, with that being said, if you look at last school year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um, I didn't really expect our school letter grades to change much, you know, because it's on table with years of a little bit of growth, a little bit of growth, a little bit of growth, and then hopefully we'll start seeing the school letter grades and, you know, improve it. Now, with that being said, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, now you can see where Robbinsville Elementary School still had a school letter grade of D, but now, in as far as the growth, we've made our progress in Robbinsville Elementary School. Same thing with the middle school, we had a school letter grade of D, but we made our growth, uh, also the high school, uh, they, they remained a C and they grew as well, and so without being said, uh, that's kind of the overall numbers and, and, and what that looks like. Now, over on the left side, I decided instead of just giving one year's worth of data, I, I gave yourself, and I did that for a purpose, um, so you can kind of see there where we had, I, I gave you my third grade reading, I gave you information for the past three school years. Now, uh, you can go all the way across from twenty-two, twenty-three, and you can see where third grade ELA, that forty point nine percent of our students were scoring levels three, four, five only on the, on the, the third grade ELA exam, and then you can kind of just look as we go down, so for example, fourth grade ELA at last, this past school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, forty-seven point two percent of our students were scoring for levels three, four, five, and so you can kind of see how that goes down all the way down through there. Now, I did, uh, you know, like I said, I, I, I did give you several school year, several school years, uh, and I did that for a purpose, and so, like, let's look, for instance, you see, like, I, I, I kind of tried to color code it for you, and so you see, like, maybe look at the, the orange and the ELA right there, so you can see there were sixth grade ELA last year, twenty-three point eight percent of our students were scoring levels three, four, five, that is a decrease from the prior school years, if you go straight across the yellow one, uh, that is a decrease, all right, but if you look at the orange in that, in other words, the yellow and the, the orange there, that's two different school years, that's two different groups of kids, all right, where now, if you look at the orange and the prior year, that is the exact same kids, all right, so, you know, like, twenty, you know, uh, in sixth grade ELA, last year, we were twenty-three point eight percent, but in the same group of kids did prior year, it was only fourteen point three percent, and so, um, I just kind of wanted to, to show you what last year's numbers looked like, where you can compare, uh, you know, eighth grade to eighth grade, but I also wanted you to be able to compare what these eighth grade kids did in seventh grade to sixth grade, and so on and so forth, in fact, and that seems. Now, uh, one more column that I put on here this year that I did not look in years past is the growth for twenty-two, twenty-three, so that's that, uh, column just to the, I guess, the right-hand column on the left side. So you can see in third grade ELA, again, forty point nine percent of our students will make the provision scores, and now again, as far as the growth goes, third grade ELA may have third growth last year, uh, you can look on the fourth grade ELA, exceeded third growth last year, uh, fifth grade ELA may, keep on going, uh, I'm gonna go down to the three through eight ELA column, or row, I guess, as you, as you can see right there, in grades three through eight, as a, as a whole collective unit, uh, ELA may have grown as, uh, across the, across the grades three through eight. Now, third grade math, if you don't notice, it's blank right there, now, the reason that is blank is because, all right, like, for ELA, you know, we have, like, the V O G, and so there is, there are scores to kind of compare, see how students did at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, to know whether they grew or not, uh, for third grade math, there is no such exact count at the beginning of the grade, and so there's, there's really no growth, uh, score that comes about from the third grade math. Uh, but you can see in fourth grade math right there, they exceeded growth, fifth grade math, of course, did not make growth, uh, one that I wanted to point out was seventh grade math, now, to look at seventh grade math, right there, it says does not make, but I have the asterisk there, right? Uh, you know, of course, with all statistical computations and math in general, uh, you know, when you're gonna come out, and you're gonna make groups, of course, there has to be a cutoff point somewhere, you know, and so, uh, that cutoff point for seventh grade math, in my opinion, I don't give a fuck for it, says does not make, because that cutoff point, they missed that cutoff point by one hundredth of one, so essentially, if we really would have had one more kid, give one more question right, then basically we're, we're making growth, and really truly, now, the growth numbers also, remember the, the summer program testing where we did spring testing, uh, if they would have included those numbers in the growth, uh, uh, if they would have included those calculations into the growth model, then it would have been maybe even growth even more, and so as far as that goes, you know, I, I, that's why I put an asterisk there and, and not, uh, I just wanted you guys to know that, in my opinion, that, that's making growth. Uh, but you can kind of see also, uh, now, the high school gets a little more complicated just because, you know, there's a group of kids, you know, you can't just necessarily look at that pink, uh, from the top left and say, well, that's third grade, then fourth grade, and fifth grade, you know, of course, uh, in high school, you don't necessarily test a subject every single year, uh, you know, so the first time that students from the inner high school, first time they are tested for, for a ELA or English, they should do it, and so, you know, they don't actually have a score for English one, and so if you look, if you look at those right there, in English two, it's kind of that, is that light as you bring a little bit colored, uh, you would actually have to pop back up, because the last time those students tested in a grading course would have been in the eighth grade in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, or the end of school year twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, so that's that, so you can kind of see there where students went in the eighth grade with thirty-seven point eight percent, and then in English two, forty-eight point eight percent, and so, anyway, you can kind of see, uh, just, uh, you know, kind of having the scores painted out, you know, who made growth, who did not, uh, one thing I will tell you, and you know, over the years, uh, you know, there's been a huge, uh, emphasis place on reading, and I think you can see that in our curriculum room right there, as far as reading goes, you know, we're in the median C, and if you remember with math, uh, math was, last year was the first year where, you know, we're really focusing in to trying to improve math, of course, you know, uh, we're making a special effort, I should put it that way, so, uh, anyway, I feel like, you know, with us going from not making growth to making growth, uh, and, and it's, we'll take, I would say, a couple of different, a couple of years, and hopefully exceeding growth, uh, you know, that's, that's the goal, you know, when we get, get our students to exceeding, uh, get a little more rigor going on in the classroom, uh, and getting our students to exceeding growth, we'll see those D's turns into Cs, and see those Cs turns into Bs, and, you know, that's, that's, of course, the goal of the report, so, um, now, this document that I took this from, there is a huge, huge document that I'm sure some of you probably already looked at anyway, uh, it's on the DPI website, it's just hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of stuff to dig through, uh, and if there's any more information that you guys would like to see, I don't mind, I'll sit down with you one-on-one, or as a group, whatever, and we can dig through that, and get you whatever you want to get, uh, but this right here was kind of the information that I pulled out, uh, to present to you today, so, uh, hopefully that gives you a decent picture of where we are in, and also.
But the state is still gonna, since these are D's, they're still gonna come in, and the state's still gonna come.
Well, now, to get, all right, all right, so yes, uh, in, in, in Robbinsville Elementary and Robbinsville Middle School, last school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, they did give us a designation of that local form, but now, to get out of that, to have that designation removed, you would need to, one or two things, you would either need to have a school letter grade of C or better, or you need to exceed growth, all right, and so, with that being said, you know, it's gonna be a lot harder to change that school letter grade, because it's, like I said, it's gonna take multiple years of, of, of exceeding or making growth to get there, I think the easiest way is gonna be for us to take that overall growth, and if we can make that number exceed, then there's where I think, there's where I feel like we'll perform a designation of all of this.
Do you feel like the state will, a- as we try to do this, will the state start trying to change standards, or get a little higher, or, I mean, are they gonna stay the same?
Well.
I mean, that's the part I.
Sure, well, the only thing that I know, I always do, uh, I was in Raleigh last week, uh, at the Test Board Leaders, uh, conference, and one of the big things is the way that school performance grades are calculated, all right, now, basically, the way that, the way they're currently calculated, especially for the, for the elementary and middle, and of course, the high school is a little more complicated, but, um, but for the high school, I'm sorry, for the elementary and middle school, essentially where that D comes from, or that, it's, it's based on a fifteen-point scale, all right, so anything from eighty-five to a hundred is essentially a A score, and then it goes fifteen points, you know, down below. Now, where that comes from is eighty percent of that score is your efficiency numbers, all right, so if you have, you know, fifty percent of your students are proficient, then basically, they're gonna take eighty percent of that, and that's what's gonna go into your school performance grades. The other twenty percent is your growth, all right, so, there's some magic formula out there that I can't get anybody to tell me, but there's some sort of magic formula out there that basically depend on, you know, what your growth numbers are, they calculate that and turn it into a number, and then they say, whatever that number is, and they take twenty percent of that, and they add it to that eighty percent of that, and basically that's the way your school performance grades are calculated. At my conference last week, uh, basically, of course, you know, this has been something that's been talking about for probably the last year, or, or going on a year now, is about, you know, how to change the, the, how they compute the, uh, school performance grades. Now, at first, when I heard that, you know, I was all excited, that, you know, maybe finally they're gonna come to some sort of, uh, understanding that growth is just as important as proficiencies, and I, and I was really kind of hoping for a fifty-fifty type thing, you know, something like that, well, uh, basically, I'm telling you right now, this, some of the things that they, they showed us, it, it blows my mind as to how in the world they're gonna use that for, for computing, uh, uh, school performance grades, so, you know, there's some of the things like, uh, you know, one thing I understand is like, you know, students need to be in school if they're gonna be able to learn and grow, and so more of the things they're looking at to include in the school performance grades is like, uh, calling absenteeism, you know, and looking at, you know, marshalling students in school, and, you know, that type of thing, the other things they're looking at is, uh, intracurricular and extracurricular activities, you know, things that, uh, you know, students have an opportunity to participate in, you know, that being a component of school performance grades, and so, you know, of course, this, this group of people that's doing this work, you know, they're hoping to have this work done, you know, by the, I'm thinking of March of next year, uh, I don't think we'll see a change in the way that it's computed or probably over the years, uh, under the high school, they'll probably have to pile it, you know, they'll, they'll be a pile, always does, I'm sure they have to pile everything, um, you know, like, you know, just for example, the intracurricular and extracurricular activities, you know, I see where that is very easily done at the high school, all right, but now, how do you do that at elementary school? You know, and, you know, of course, our kids at elementary school participate in things, but it's not actually run by school, so it doesn't, you know, you know, we even have one question at the conference itself, what about boys, girls, or girls guys? You know, can, can, can that be used, and the answer was no, because it's not actually through the school, it's not offered through the school, and so, you know, it's just, there's several things that I think they have to work through, but I do know that there is a group of people that are looking at the, the way that school performance grades are calculated, and so, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it does, it does, because I think the absentee thing would definitely be off as we, if they calculate that, with, with, what are you doing? Now, what's the absentee rate is, I don't know what the school's absentee rate is, that might be something that the principals could bring to us, do you, do you have that?
And, and also, it's a big, massive, and it really, you know, what, what they end up with the definition of what, 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 I don't even guess, and he gets some book by.
And the thing about this, I saw one of those students, you're not there.
Right, but they, they have a big old long list, and that's just two that kind of popped off, off of my head, but there, there, there's several different things that they're looking at to see how they could, uh, I guess, best word I can use is include the calculation system that happens, but, uh, anyway, um, again, I'd like to invite you guys, anybody that would like to sit down with me one-on-one, or as a group, or whatever, you're, you're more than welcome to come by, and I'll, we'll get in that great big document, we'll, we'll filter down until we figure out what it's like, that's pretty much all I have.
What's the state average on that grad, grad question, right?
Uh, I don't know. Eight seats.
Six.
What about, what's that, ACT workkeys, what's, what's?
That is a, that is the numbers, uh, numbers that it's, that were, and you gotta remember, I think, I, I warned you this last year, uh, that the, off, or the, the, the Board of Governors for the state of North Carolina, they changed the proficiency number for the ACT, and it went from, what, eighteen to twenty-one, or something like that, yeah, so, you know, you had to score eighteen, that's the composite number for ACT, you can get prior years, with the special year, it moved to like twenty-one, and so, you know, the, the expectation went up, and so, uh, but basically, what that number is, that, that number is a, a combination of students that were proficient on the ACT, and the students that were proficient on the workkeys exam, which is what they give to students that are, what they, what they consider completers in the CTE, I, I'm not sure, I, you know, I've never seen a workkeys test, I really don't know what a workkeys test look like, but basically, my other, uh, testing account really directs us around the state, you know, I have a really strong , uh, group that we made together quite a bit, but, you know, according to them, the ones that seen it, they, they, they don't even think workkeys is really a CTE thing, but, uh, that's what, uh, they expect us to do for the CTE level, but, uh, but anyway, the ACT workkey number, that, that is your, uh, combination of students that were considered proficient on ACT, and students that were considered proficient on workkeys. Then our graduation rate was was at ninety-one point five percent last year, and, uh, I, I don't have the state number on, I, I, of course, I can get that for you very easy, but I don't have.
It's really.
Can you explain that fifth grade math, because, I mean, I see the numbers, and it's gone up, it looked like it improved, but didn't it see growth? Fifth grade, and you explained, you explained doesn't make growth on the asterisk on the, on the seventh grade math, but.
I would say I would actually look to see what that, uh, what that composite number is, uh, you know, like I said.
To put it into, to be grown.
Yes, you know, like, I, I don't know how much difference it was, uh, obviously, the one that stuck out to me was seventh grade.
Well, yeah, but it was twenty-nine. on the seventh grade math, but.
I would, I would actually look to see what that, uh, what that composite number is.
Okay.
Uh, you know, like I said.
It would have been to, to be growth.
Yes, you know, like, I, I don't know how much difference it was, uh, obviously, the one that stuck out to me was seventh grade.
Well, yeah, but it was twenty-nine point one, and I bear in mind that the equation's twenty-nine point five, so.
Yeah. Again, that'd be something I'll be happy to sit down with you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Green, low wealth supplement for teachers.
Uh, yes. All right, uh, the first thing I want to mention here on your agenda, uh, what I did today was I looked on the, uh, Department of Defense Church website, which is a lot of policy manual, and the title, uh, the title for this source of funding has changed, it says low wealth supplement for teachers, you may want to write this down just before the act, now that we're recording, but it's called, "Mound Supplemental Funds for Teacher Compensation." Just wanted to make, I made that call. And, uh, I'll hand some documents out as I'm speaking. Uh, the purpose of today's discussion, um, there's no need to mention any of the figures on these documents, uh, these are just examples of how, um, how, how, your decision on how to pay this supplement. The purpose today is, um, it, it decides whether on this supplement, we already know which certified teachers, certified instructional support qualify for this supplement, we already know that, we don't need to discuss that. The discussion today is to determine whether folks that qualify, whether we wanna take, once we receive the allotment, not receive this allotment yet, uh, take that allotment and spread this supplement out equally among the staff members who qualify, or, the document that escaped you as an example of how we can use, um, uh, a step increase, um, on a five-year, uh, step, zero to five, six to ten, et cetera, where you may want to increase, uh, as you go up that step, the allotment for higher tenured teachers. Uh, if you look at that, this document at the top, uh, there's step twenty-five plus years, um, I'm not gonna mention these figures, but the first line under that, we got eighteen staff members that qualify for the maximum, okay, at that group. Now, we probably don't be able to pay them maximum, uh, because we have to pay, uh, out of this allotment, we have to pay social security and retirement matching, that takes away from the allotment, that can be spread out among all those folks who qualify. So if you look down, uh, the next step, twenty to twenty-four years, we're nine folks that qualify. Um, the amount there, it is an example of how if you start at zero five and go up, you know, if you have a six to ten, there will be an increase, if you go to ten to fifteen, there'll be another increase. Um, and what I wanna do, uh, take up what you're just saying, you made across this.
This is the third year of this.
This is the third year. In the last two years, first year the board voted to spread that allotment, that supplement out, out equally to, um, all staff members who qualify. This document that you got, um, what it shows is, shows years of experience in the first college, and I wanna make this point, and I think we all well aware and have known for several years, that when this, when the legislature gives increases to certified teachers with instructional support, you may see in the budget or seeing, uh, new media, uh, like this year, I'm saying that, uh, they have awarded an increase, an average increase of seven percent. That doesn't mean everyone in these years of service get the same increase, okay? And we've known, uh, that your folks from twenty years plus have not gotten the same proceeding increase as the lower tenured, uh, teacher, uh, certified teacher in instructional support. So, uh, this document and the, and you'll see in the far, uh, right column, you'll see the dollar difference, um, in how these, uh, pay increases are impacted, and those folks are twenty, twenty years plus, um, as the years of service go up, you see that the dollar amount that's given is less, you gotta decrease the shit, uh, of the previous years of service or employees, though. Bottom line is, uh, your folks that are twenty years, twenty-five years plus don't get, uh, as less of an increase from the, uh, state budget, uh, if you're willing, if you're employees. So I wanted to bring this to your attention, um, in order for you to make a decision on whether you want to, uh, do as you previously, previously done last two years, what we've had to do sometimes, what any going out, everybody qualifies, or if you want to use this step increase, um, to kinda, you know, award years of service for one plus, whether it's public or not.
Decide today.
You don't have to decide today, uh, no, I was kinda hoping that, uh, the board attorney would be here, uh, to let us know whether we need to vote on it today or table it for the November meeting, but Ms. Knight wants to pay this in November, which we did last year. So if you want to, uh, take this and digest this, um, use this later and make a decision on what you wanna do, like, you know, an equal fee or an equal amount, uh, for each employee that qualifies, or if you wanna use a step increase, uh, if you've got that information, you have to make that decision.
Chairman Nelson?
Yes.
Uh, I think I mentioned this the first year this came out, and, and, and I voted to do this step increase, uh, because I feel like, like, like Mr. Green said, a lot of your teachers come down the road, they just don't get, really would have liked to have seen in the first years that it's equitable, but we voted to do equal amounts, um, because I have, I, you know, they're younger teachers, they get into teaching and they, they may not like it, and they get the same as somebody that has taught for nineteen to twenty years, and those teachers are probably gonna stay here until they retire. I mean, they're not gonna, but I've seen, you know, teachers leaving the system that got the equal amount and go on to do something else, so, you know.
I agree with you. I worked the last fifteen years on a teaching career and never got a laugh.
I did too, so, but, but I, I would personally like to see this, and we want to expedite this, and you, but if y'all want to digest it, uh, and like Mr. Green said, we can't, we can't put this number out there, we can't pay this total amount, but, so.
And that, those, if you do this, do this step working as like, uh, equal amount, um, we will, that number will, you'll not see that number, it's on your documents there that you.
That's true.
That won't change, it's just an example of how that number.
I understand. But, but your, but your twenty-plus teachers will, your, your teachers will get, your older teacher, your, well, they wouldn't be older, but will get over.
Forty.
Do you know what the allotment is gonna be?
We do not, we do not. We, uh, the budget, uh, is on the governor's desk, and whether today's the tenth day or tomorrow, I'm not sure, but, uh, that will become law because he's not gonna sign, uh, but we haven't received our allotment yet, once we get the allotment, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, if you decide to vote on it, uh, at the next board meeting, we should have an allotment by the end of October, you know that.
But the second year it did.
Uh, it did.
Yes.
It did. Uh, I think there's a flaw in the formula, uh, component, uh, first of all, it's salary information, I'm not gonna say you put that in, but I just wanna.
As far as the average, that's something I appreciate. Thank you.
But I think there's a, a flaw in one of the components of the formula, um, what the state does is they look at your certified classroom teachers and instructional support that are only paid out of state funds, last year in the sixth, uh, period. So you know we've got teachers that are paid, uh, from, from state and federal and some lower, that are maybe just creative, and so, um, if, if, the formula included those folks, I think our lot would be greater, which would allow us to pay them maximum. Class, really, now that we pay, uh, across all folks that qualify, there's still about five hundred and ten dollars, I think it was maybe thirty-four hundred, here before.
But, but, but as a low wealth county, we change our.
We qualify with maximum, um, low wealth is part of the formula, I think the biggest part of the formula is your, having a better membership, your smaller schools will get them whenever you're, um, per, employed with all lives.
So, yeah, it's, in my opinion, we should go down next, the, how y'all feel, I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to say.
I mean, I, here's what she said, you're trying to say that these people aren't gonna, we're gonna decrease our most experienced people, I mean.
Not really decreasing, we're not rewarding them for their insurance.
That's right.
That's the same.
But if we do.
That's my plea.
You ready to vote? That's fine.
If that's okay with you.
Sure.
I think I'll scream. Tell us the death name.
I'll put your job.
Forget it. Figure out what it's gonna be, and I got it, so we can.
And you may.
We're not moving. It's. I like it, I'm gonna vote for that. If you watch it.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, uh, uh, give the supplements based on years of experience? Do I have a motion to do this?
I'll make a motion, supplemental funds that come in for this year, on teacher compensation and support back, and behind the stairs, yes.
Do I have a say?
Yeah.
All in favor?
You give the second, I'm sorry.
You can give the job, and I was.
I, I made the motion.
You did the second, okay.
Any opposed? Okay. So you've got.
And you said this time one of this, uh, little person that she can, hey, we'll give it out. Cool.
Is that all, Mr. Green?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Personnel, Mr. Moody.
Get the list of names, I'll send it to you, you'll be able to.
All in favor? All right, up on the agenda is board policies and Ms. Davis is not here today, and Mr. Moody said he would explain.
Yeah, she, uh, had, uh, family murder, so she had an doctor, yeah, wanted to, she called us, playing music today yesterday, and so, there should be a package, these are second reading policies, which are time sensitive as a result of the general assembly imposing these policies, uh, so, therefore, I don't think there should be any issues with execution of policy three, five, four, zero, which I've included in your packets, uh, as you can see, there's also a memo, and she emailed this too, but it was yesterday, so you may have not had a chance to look at it, but a memo explains, uh, the policies, the changes that were put on Thursday, fourteenth, what was discussed something like last time, you look at half of it, page one, uh, it is the native, I put the tone line a star at the beginning of it, and it includes its raise, your system, I have an option, six P, H, R, which include health and safety, it's eligible, as a health curriculum. So, and her vibe, as she said, that, that y'all should go ahead and vote on these policies due to the time sensitive nature of, well, the state as a work form, so, that's how I like, I've noticed.
All right, now, do we need to do these individually or?
Do you do some easier than I asked?
Yeah. We can do it later, because they've already been presented to us, and that's right, that's correct.
I put a, I put a, I sent an email, I sent an email to include, and I'm trying to figure this out now, because Ms. Knight agreed that the, the regular, uh, one, uh, did not include it said, education program kindergarten in fourth grade as required by law in seventh grade, and I said they left for fifth and sixth grade out in pre-K, so I'm trying to figure out if we redid that, because Ms. Knight was in support of that in the email, uh, did you read that email?
This is awesome.
Okay.
How did they, how did the committee meet?
Oh, thank.
Where we went on this, so, that's why the sentence that there is underlying has been added, because it includes the fifth and sixth grade, so by the law, we have to, we can't do it in K four, and then fifth and sixth grade is school optional, whether or not to include that, so we added that sentence to say that it would be school optional, and in seventh grade it is required by law that you start.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's.
So, so we did get.
Yes, yes, we did, we added that in, uh, that way, there was something there that showed, uh, what the school of fifth and sixth grade had a, had a, basically.
And you can't be mentioning it all.
No, not K four, and, and pre-K, yeah, pre-K, the fourth grade, it cannot be mentioned.
So fifth and sixth is off.
What's that?
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth is off. Yes. And that is, that falls only under the health curriculum, you know, is what that's talking about, so, uh, no, we, but we do some things to, uh, the program that fifty mill salsa runs at the sixth grade, but that doesn't follow what you're following, because that's outside the health curriculum. This is the thing, the health curriculum, we say it's called by, it was the.
How does it get presented to you, kid, or the child, like, hey, this is the letter for this class, give it to your parents for this, that this is for sex education, well, how does it get to the parent?
That, I, I mean, you talking about like, if it was the second grade or?
Well, the, the fifth and sixth grade is off.
Well, it says off, so I will tell you that at this point in time, that is not called a brand.
Okay, so we'll get.
That's what I'm hearing.
It's a mission, right? We, we're doing that at school, so, and then this Mills Satch's program that she runs, they do, parents do get, uh, something, and they either opt in or opt out of, of that program, so all students are not required to participate in that grant under the program that she is over as a marriage and sex partner, okay?
But I can pay.
But that's outside of this policy, because it's not just based on curriculum.
Your children are involved, that is difficult, that's what it does with it.
She's been.
Excellent job.
So is gender studies or gender identity taught in any grade in our school?
No.
No.
Good to hear, guys.
Okay, so, we'll get it again.
Do I have a motion to approve policy thirteen, ten to four thousand and two parental involvement? These are all second readings. Policy thirty-two, ten, declaring of inspection, awe, and objection to instructional materials. Policy thirty-five, forty, comprehensive health education program. Policy forty-three, thirty-five, criminal behavior. Policy forty-seven, twenty, surveys of students. Policy sixty-one, twenty, student health services, and policy seventy-three, hundred, staff responsibilities. Do I have a motion to approve these second readings? Do I have a say?
Say.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now, I guess we do, since it's personal, now, I guess we do need to go into close session.
Chairman Nelson, you have to say something, there's a problem, but, I don't know, I've heard about it all the time, you guys can see what you think. Um, the people on the other side of the camera can't hear the meeting, maybe you've heard, I've heard Hanky talk too quick, I can't hear people. When Kevin, when you're standing up here, I, I'm aware of everybody's words today, just to see if they ever be able to be heard back there, and most of them probably would be, but a lot of it, I, I would say some of the important questions and things are not. So that's, that's a problem, and I think we can solve it with some microphones, but I teach this, this fourth grade, she's not just a microphone. I think Charlene needs to be up here and she can conduct her minutes closer to us, because minutes were missed, I, I introduced two board policies, they're not in the minutes. We asked, we, uh, we actually went through a revise the minutes, and I don't wanna go say it without revise, and honestly, I don't care, I, I'm, I'm okay, I don't even care about it, but, in a little, they emailed in the minutes about the rigos deal, what we had in there, we called me, I spoke to people, and we talked about something, we were gonna check the minutes out to make sure we understood. I know you're getting yours, because my sister's right, and I love her.
Well, your sister's also come in today and said she can hear great.
Thank you.
But, nothing's changed. We've done absolutely nothing different back here today. Same microphone, same.
Sure.
Yeah.
I remember when I used to listen, I just turned off. Talk about listening frustration. But how about this? I really came up with something. If if we don't interrupt each other, that's the other good point. You actually want to interrupt, and I can't keep up. Okay, I have that same problem, I have, it's a forum meeting, if Mr. Nelson can drop this meeting without that, we should be able to not interrupt each other. That's gonna fix another issue. But what about this? Why can't we bring over someone from the high school like we do? You're also to remember there are people that understand video, understand how to do this stuff, and put them in here and record on these, with good sound, we use microphones, hands-free here, hands-free here, these folks. Um, Ms. Davis, when she's here. Hands-free microphones, so everything is going out at like a level at this, you know what I'm saying? You can really hear it. And we're recording it, with a digital camera, and so when a big O's question comes up with hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of stuff involved, we can hear it. Our videos are quality, we can put it on the website, click on board, the board members will be there, board policy and board video, and we can be given an honor for a memorial um advantage to our people, because I believe when people actually can go to the um the website and see a very clear, clean copy of this, they're gonna say, I don't use that for my my meetings. Substandard. So, that's my win. If anybody, I'd like to make a motion that we actually put microphones in here, I'd like to make a motion.
We've been down there for nine months, and then you're talking money, so.
Right, I knew there would be money, but I'm talking taxpayers are gonna say, the money was spent if I couldn't hear the meeting. And what about the big O's deal? When we have a minutes, we not, we have a snapshot. If anybody understands what minutes are, minutes are a snapshot. It's not a transcription, it's it's not transcribed. So when we had a question, we actually have no idea what it said, I don't know, that sounds like a big problem, especially right now on the twenty-first century where digital stuff is easy. Heck, Charlene's phone's probably picking this up better than anything, these guys' phones. So, I make a motion to put microphones in.
There's a change in Jim, did it add that?
Oh, I get, is making a motion?
No.
We have to have it on the agenda.
My opinion is, too, you better with the house, because just microphones alone, so years ago, it was between two to three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I knew they wouldn't be cheap, I didn't think they would be. So this is something that I need to be on the agenda for next month.
I think the proper way for me to suggest it, is prefer back to pretend, look in between the bells and go. I mean, we can't just, you know, we we just wanna lay a policy, or or vote to do something, but there's no money to do it, you know?
Right.
At the wheels, so.
Well, maybe somebody will come forward.
Maybe look at the logistics.
I can hear the mischief, but I. Well, certainly not, what are they gonna pay for? Because that, I don't know, you know, I can just see that, I wonder, I can see the quality of it and think, wow, we would really have a, just really professional money. That's my opinion. But I, okay, I thank your suggestion, but I still would like to go on to the um agenda, and I'm gonna do a little research. I'm gonna see if other people give it just a little bit more, you know? So I have to be on the agenda for next month for this thing. I'll personally be on the agenda.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Brett C. A., Brett C. three, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Brett C. C., I move that the Education Board of Education to receive, no, that's not gonna be mine. I'll skip there. Pursuant to provisions of North Carolina General Statute one fourteen dash three eighteen point eleven, Brett C. C., I move that the Education Board of Education to propose session to receive, no, that's not gonna be mine. I'll skip there. Pursuant to provisions of North Carolina General Statute one fourteen dash three eighteen point eleven, Brett C. C., I move that the Education Board of Education to propose session for the purpose of considering personal matters behind the in-house, allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one point three dash three eighteen point eleven, Brett C. A., Brett C. six, and the North Carolina General Statute, uh, one fifteen C dash three twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve Ren Millsaps as the end middle school track coach?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I'll bring to you for the elementary nurse position that is opened up, Miss Dana Anderson.
Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Dana Anderson as the elementary nurse?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Latresa Phillips, approve or substitute?
Do I have a motion to approve Latresa Phillips as a substitute?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Donna Thompson as a WCU intern.
Do I have a motion to approve Donna Thomas as a WCU intern?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Mary Slaughter, volunteer for the Ag program.
Do I have a motion to approve Mary Slaughter for the Ag program?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Erica Daniels, twenty-first century substitute.
Do I have a motion to approve Erica Daniels as a twenty-first century substitute?
I might as well approve.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
One, Joey Cagle, volunteer for the high school.
Do I have a motion to approve Joey Cagle to uh as a volunteer for the high school wrestling program?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, any announcements, Mr. Moody?
Uh, next board meeting, uh, is not on the regular uh schedule we have, the board meeting will be November second at eight AM. They like that for the meeting, the discussion, this is in progress.
We need to adjourn.
I'm not.
But you didn't tell me also, Karen's came back in for a first session. We put you back in that session.
Who who made the motion?
Ma'am, I think. No, it was not me, okay.
Jonathan and Ann. Ms. Davis. Okay, so the next meeting is November second at eight AM. It's a special call meeting, and I may say there will be no other uh board meeting that month, okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?